We'll call it to order this August the 3rd, 2016 budget hearing. All commissioners are present. Before we get started, I've got one quick or a couple of quick comments to make. First off, the administrator's going to give us a budget presentation and after that will be the opportunity, we'll open up the budget hearing and if you've signed up, you'll get an opportunity at that time if you have any questions or comments on the budget. This is not going to be quite like a normal public comment. Only items that refer to the budget will be accepted, nothing else. And in normal public comment, we don't address a lot of times what's brought up at that time. Tonight, they will be addressed. If you have questions or comments on the budget, we will address them at this meeting and take care of that. One other quick thing I want to say, kind of, most of you are familiar with the process, but I know when it gets down to questions and stuff on the budget, you may get the feeling, if you're not familiar, that the commissioners sure don't have very many questions or comments about the budget. Well, we've spent several hours going through this. We meet with all the department heads, they present their budgets to us, we talk with them at the time, we have questions for them, we have comments, we work together with every department head, and also our community partners come in and present their budgets and their requests to us. So we go through numerous hours doing that with each department and community partner. Then, we have a wrap-up session later on when that's all done, and just commissioners meet with the administrator and we go over everything that we've done up to this date, up to that date, and that's when we get a chance to ask our questions, make our comments, try to change some things if we think it's necessary. So, I just wanted you to be aware that we are not seeing this for the first time up here, we've spent quite a bit of time on this also. So, with that, if no other commissioners have anything, they will put in there before we get going. We'll go to the items of business. John Holmes, our administrator, will present us a presentation on the 2017 Franklin County budget.
Good evening, commissioners. Just to kind of build on what you said for the community at large, roughly, we're talking anywhere from about 15 to 20 hours that the commissioners have set and walked through this budget. This starts out as a budget book, you see the recommended budget over on the desk where I usually sit. That's about 300 pages that you guys weighed through, going through it page by page, looking at every department's requests, every department's budget, and that is just on top of the hours that is already spent by the department heads and the elected offices and me working through those budgets before they, those books even come to you. So, a lot of hours have been put in initially to, for us to get to this point here. And countless hours, and like I said, this process starts for us in about March, February or March every year. Just to, I know that you guys have seen this before, but for just the community at large, I think it's a good process to take a look at and what we do. What is a budget? The tool? A budget is a tool to allocate scarce public resources for the provision of community services or issues within the community. It is mandated by KSA 79, 29, 25 and others, that we have to have an annual budget that is approved by the county commissioners. And the goals and the objectives of the county budget are as follows. It is a financial plan for the county on an annual basis. It is a resource allocation plan. We get the dollars and the resources in, and we're stating where those are going to go out. It's also a policy guide. Commissioner Waymire has said in the past during meetings that this is probably the, one of the most important public policy decisions that's made by the commissioners on an annual basis, and that's absolutely right. And it also is a communication tool. The things that we put in the budget, how we allocate those resources, that's communicating to the public, to the community that we serve, just the important things that is on our list of priorities, and communicating that to the community so that they know where the dollars, their tax dollars are going. And also, it's a planning tool. The things that we're looking at sometimes carry on to future budget years and not just contained in this year. Sometimes there's bigger plans and that have to fall into line, they could stretch out a number of years, and that is part of this. Budgetary law, Kansas budgetary law requires local units of government to adopt a balanced budget through a process open to the public. We are required to have these meetings so that the people, the community that we serve, they have the opportunity to weigh in, see what we're doing, and voice opinions if they have any on that. So, and it's all about transparency and then just being part of the public process. Once approved, the unit of government is bound by the amount authorized in the budget and may not raise taxes or spend monies above what has been allocated within the budget authority. This, once this is set, the only way that we can change the budget is through an amendment process that comes back before you. No department heads are authorized without the prior knowledge and direction of the county commissioners to spend above what is allocated to them in their departmental or office budgets. And anything that comes up, we discuss those things with you. According to the Kansas law, the budget must be balanced, and basically that just comes down to is that we can't go run a deficit like the federal government does. We are required by law to, that we, our resources coming in must be equal to or below what our expected expenditures are going to be for any given budget year. So now that we got that covered, to just jump in real quick, let's talk about revenue a little bit and give you a kind of an overview of where we are. For 2015, revenue came in at 5% above projections. The two things that really drove that, number one, was the sales tax was 13% above what we projected it to be. We surplus had more dollars coming in than what we expected to the amount of $209,000. And fees for services also came in higher. One thing I will say on that is important to remember is that the fees came in for services at a higher rate, 15%, because of activity. It's not something that we raised the fees that much. The fees were raised, but that was at the state of Kansas, at the state's level, we didn't have anything to do with that. Some of those fees that came in just came in because of increased activity. So we just, I think that's important to always clarify that. Taxes collected, what was projected, our ad valorem or property taxes, came in only .16 below what we expected, so just a small amount less than what we had projected. Motor vehicle came in at 12% higher, recreational vehicles came in at 12% higher. And that's also, again, just to do to nothing that we've done, but it's just economic activity, purchasing, things like that, came in higher than expected. So, people buying more cars and different things like that, it came in a little higher. Delinquent taxes, we were a little under getting our delinquent taxes in, collected. Again, that's not anything that we're doing, we're active in our collections and trying to get that in, it's just that when people come in, that's just a little lower. And then also 1620, so our bigger truck taxes were just a touch lower, at a 5% lower than what was projected. For 2017, the revenue overall had a modest increase, and this, I want to be, to clarify, is just the, not the ad valorem tax, it's not the property tax, but our overall other income and revenue that we receive, sales tax and different things like that. That was a moderate overall increase of 1.9% is what we've projected that out to be. 2016 sales tax currently, we track that, we get that information every month, and we're currently on target for, and remaining steady for what we need to be for what we budgeted for the 2016 budget year. Before I move on, is there any discussion or any questions about that information at this time? Moving to the valuation and mill levy comparison, what we have in front of us this year is a slight increase in the overall valuation of about 2.3%. One thing that I pointed out last year, and I think is pretty important to keep track of, is that we see this line going up at about a 45-degree angle. Over from 1997 to about 2008, we saw a pretty steady increase. On average, valuations were going up about 5.9% a year during that time period, and then inflation rate was only about 2.60. So we were outpacing inflation in our valuations by rates almost double. And I think that's important to keep in mind during this time because those valuations were increasing the amount that we were spending within, within the county government, but it was absorbed by the evaluations. And then on top of that, we were outpacing inflation, and it worked very, very well to us. And then you can see in 2009 that we kind of hit the ceiling there. From 2009 to 2017, our valuations that we see, what the changes is right here during that time period from 2009 to 2017, has averaged about .5, so not even 1%. And the inflation rate during that time has continued on at about 2% during that time. The nice thing is, is that we are moving incrementally upwards in our valuation, which, our overall valuation, which helps us in the long run. But again, when inflation is outpacing our valuations, something has to give at that point. We cannot continue to run at the same level with our tax levy and that sort of thing when inflation is outpacing us. Towards that end, what we see in the overall valuation, excuse me, the overall levy change is a .551, and you can see in 2016, the proposed rate was 60.747. By the time when the county clerk puts all the valuation in and double checks everything, the actual valuation came in just slightly lower than what we had projected it to be. But for 2017, the proposed tax rate has moved up .551 to 61.229. Towards that end, what we needed funding was $123,000. An extra $123,000 is what we needed to be able to get to this year's budget. In moving the tax levy to, from the proposed 60.747 last year to the 61.229, you see what the difference is on a $100,000 home. The average comes out to $5.54 is what we see on a $100,000 home. That is what the taxpayer can expect to see a rise in their property taxes from the county is $5.54. Any comments or questions so far?
Just back on this, a couple, three slides ago, not that it makes any difference, that one right there, do, do you look at any comparisons on average on state, statewide valuations?
I do, and overall, this is not only region and statewide, and sure, there are going to be anomalies here and there, little pockets where we don't, we don't see this trend, but this trend is pretty much nationwide. We have seen that, where they've hit that across the board, hit that, that ceiling across the board. Some of the things that I've read, basically asked a new, kind of a basic question, is this our new normal? We had a period from 1945 to 2009 where we saw huge increases in our economy, in our gross domestic product and things like that. That was just beyond anything that had ever come before that, and once we hit that, is that our new normal that we can expect? And quite honestly, at this point, where we continue to see 2-point percent growth on gross domestic product, things like that, that may be, that may be.
As far as the mill rate itself, I've looked at other counties, we're right in the middle of the pack. And the best explanation for that is the ones who have the lowest have an immense amount of valuation, they have a lot of things in their county worth a lot of money. Johnson County is the lowest. Johnson County's an anomaly on pretty much all things, if you look budget-wise, but I think their mill rate's 18, somewhere around there. But the, on the other end of that spectrum, I think that one of the highest is 115. You've got to think though, Toronto County by statute, you have to have so many things. You have to have a register of deeds, a sheriff, a jail, coroner, health department, noxious weeds department, all things by statute you have to have. Obviously, the scale's going to be different for each county, but so, between the things we have to have, no matter how big we are, and the fact that we don't have a refinery, a power plant.
Nuclear power plant, yep.
If we had a nuclear power plant, well, 50 cents every dollar in Coffee County, for instance, comes from that. It's like having a half-off on your taxes.
Right, right. And to your point, Commissioner Waymire-
Exactly why we're looking to invest in the industrial park.
That's exactly right. Those two things together, the property tax that we potentially get out there from property and new buildings, and then also potentially the growth within the community and within the county for just population-wise, helps spread that out quite a bit.
Taxes are like a big nasty pie nobody wants to eat. The more people at the table, the smaller your piece gets.
That's exactly right. To your point, I mean, that's something that for me to keep in mind next year is that to provide that, that perspective that you did, is to look at other counties that are similarly situated to us, to look at what their levies are and to give that comparison, because that's always good for people to see, so. Any other questions or comments? I think, like I said, that the big thing that I, I was encouraged about is that, yes, it is a, an increase, but again, the, the amount for us is fairly minimal, and we're getting to a point where we're, we're really working and doing some very, very good things and getting back to, we know that during that really rough economic time, there were some things that were deferred maintenance on several things, some roofs that needed to be replaced. We have, I just had a conversation with Paul earlier, is that we have a, one of our air conditioning units up, up on top of this roof for one of our doctor's offices that is going bad. So we're having to take a look at fixing that, how long will that last, and weigh that against how much it actually will cost to replace it. And so we're looking at those type of things. And now we're at a point where those things are catching up with us and we're, we're having to address some of those things. But there was nothing we could do about it. We had to continue basic operations and move forward. Areas of concern, I will continue this, you, you guys have heard this from me quite a bit through this budget session, is that the 2018 is the first year for the budgetary spending lid. That's going to be capped on moving forward with the Consumer Price Index, and so this is going to, this is a very foundational year. This is the year that it's going to be based on. Having the discussions with the department heads, it's going to be vitally important that we keep pace with some things. In the past, we've like, well, let's let that go and, and we'll see if there's some other savings that we have in some other areas to be able to do that. If we know that there's an increase and we're seeing it and it's a trend, we're going to have to budget for it because, and make sure that we adjust the budget accordingly. It's easier to take those one, one or 2% steps on a yearly basis than put it off for a couple of years and come back and have to have a 3% or 4% increase on, in a departmental budget because of some of those things. And that spending lid is going to bump us up against that, so we just don't have an option. We have to address that and know exactly what our costs are going to be on several items. The second thing is that mortgage registration fees, those continue to reduce. Some of that is being offset by some other fees that were, some changes that were made at the state level, but that is something to, to take a look at. Another, I would say, future reductions mandated by the state, there's some other things that they're looking at, and we always kind of hold our breath a little bit when the state legislature goes into session and starts looking at some of those things. The impact, the decisions that they are going to make on our ability to provide the level of service that we currently have, to be able to continue that is important. The other issue is probably industrial park bonding. You'll see that I mentioned right here exemptions. There are some exemptions in the budgetary spending lid that will benefit us, that we'll be able to do some important things. Bonding is one of those, but even though we're exempt from having to go, if we're for bonding, to have to go to an election on that, there is some impact that that will have. And so I would encourage in the coming months that we potentially have a discussion about some other avenues of revenue that might be available to us with some changes so that we can continue to work on lessening the impact that the bonding may have on us on Any other comments or discussions about revenue? Going into the 2017 budget items expenses, a couple of things is just the, the process for the, more than anything for the community so that they understand is the process is, is that all of the department heads are working off a base budget, and that is what they, what they got last year. That is their base budget, and any request that they're making to an increase in their base budget for, for operations or any other requests for capital items and things like that, that is all calculated, and there is formal request forms that they put in, and the commissioners walk through every one of those and discuss each one of those during the budget discussions with the department heads. And so everything that you'll, that you'll see here has been thoroughly discussed. A couple of things, the treasurer had a postal pre-sort discussion request, the county attorney had a $2,700 request for mileage as an ongoing expense. The sheriff had a $25,600 request for his office on, for different things within his office. One thing I will point out is that the actual amount that's been put in is 25, the $600, it was removed per the sheriff's request. Protective vests, this was something that had not been budgeted in the past as a annual expense that he knows he needs to replace bulletproof vests for his staff. Bulletproof vests have a life expectancy of about three years, and so after about three years, they're needing to be replaced with new ones. And so putting that into the, into the budget, he knows he'll have that every year so that we can do, he can buy the equipment that he needs to protect a staff. Less lethal shotguns, that was a capital expense, that was shotguns, but also less lethal equipment that might be possible for him to use for different situations and handling different incidents and things like that that come up for his staff. The jail, 36,000. The big one there was two things, is food and then also medical expenses. Those are not just guesses, we know that that's what it is based on actuals. For the last several years, those have been going up, and so those, those costs have been calculated, and we're putting in a better amount to fund that on an annual basis. 911, there was a slight change there of $800 from, with new staff. Buildings and grounds, they, we received a staff request for buildings and grounds out of the total amount of 43,777, 25,230 comes out of the general fund. The remaining amount comes out of the employee benefits fund. Information technology, again, a very, very important aspect of what we do. We could not do a lot of the things that we do without information technology. What was once started out as maybe a convenience is now a vital component of our operations in all departments and offices. Their combined requests came to 33,326, and that is based on actuals, what we have been spending in the past. And then the last one was juvenile detention for different things for staff, and then also the big one there was $4,000. Food has continued to go up, and so the cost of food, but also the amount of juveniles that we've been housing has went up also, and that has increased that. I think it's important to know, not to, to point this out, but I think it's important to kind of think about that the 46% of the, the budget requests, again, were in the area of law enforcement, and that is something that is an exemption. And so we would be able to, starting next year, pull that out and to look at that, that 61,000 and say, hey, this is exemptions, we don't have to, this doesn't qualify under the, the spending lid. So I think that's important to, to point out. And I also think it's important to point, point out is that those things were done for public safety. Public safety, safety of our uniform staff, and that can't be understated. The last couple of things is some capital requests that came in. Patrol cars, four replacement cars to the tune of 204,000. Again, patrol cars cost about $50,000 each between the purchase of the vehicle and then equipping them and getting us to a level which, which we know we need to replace cars on a regular and frequent basis and making sure that we can maximize the life of those cars as part of that. And then one work pickup for the planning department, replacement vehicle, 27,000. So total for that was 231,000 for patrol vehicles and a work pick, pickup replacement. Equipment purchases came out at 305,000, and that is the skid loader, that's been purchased out of reserve funds already this year, so we can reduce that. But the track hoe next year is the big purchase that we, we have planned. With the, the dollars that get set aside into the road and bridge reserve fund, we will have adequate reserve funds to, to take care of that. And then also the ambulance, that is something that we do on a annual basis. It's either a new or a remount, and that's to be determined. Nick and I are looking at one other piece of equipment that he has, one other vehicle, and if there's a better use on that, instead of replacing that maybe a year from now, taking a look at that and see if it makes financial sense to do that sooner than later. The last thing I think is pretty important is the community partner funding. This year, the commissioners have seen fit to award 705,488 to different community partners within the community. These community partners do vital work within our county and within our local communities. Conservation District, Franklin County Historical Society, Prairie Paws Animal Shelter, COF, which deals with developmental disabilities, the Franklin County Development Council, economic development activities within the community, Elizabeth Layton Center, mental health, services for the elderly, Meals on Wheels- health, services for the elderly, Meals on Wheels. We work with them as far as the, the transportation, the elderly transportation around the, the county and the community, the county fair, and then also the Swan Arts Festival. Overall, the increase for those community services and community partners were, was only 6,500. And so a pretty small amount when you consider in total the amount that the county helps these organizations out with.
I just want to say on those two that most of those all up there know how important it is to, for us to try to keep the budget down. Maybe one or two didn't, but almost all those come in asking for no more than they got last year. And a couple of them did, didn't get what they asked for, but they know how, the importance of us trying to keep it down and they most all came in not asking for, for more money. I want to say, I think in my four years up here, I don't think COF has ever asked for more than what they get the year before that I know of.
Right.
And they, and they understand what we're trying to do to keep it down, so they're very good about trying to help us do that.
Yeah, absolutely. And it, and like I said, it can't be, again, understated too much, just what these organizations do for us. If some of those were not here and, and everything, we would be, the county and the individual communities would be responsible for trying to manage some of those things, so.
I think also that they are supplementing theirs with a lot of volunteer help.
Absolutely.
And that's, that is key to our whole county is the people who serve on committees and boards and volunteer in places, many of them just unknown, totally unknown. And yet they are providing us, like Rick said, to, to help keep the budgets down, get more bang for the buck. And I, I think the people in our community that are doing that are unknown heroes in a lot of ways and I, we certainly appreciate that from this board's position, that contribution to our society.
One thing I do want to talk about real quick is there are some, there are some issues there. I know the little arrows, I couldn't get those to change for some reason, so. Longevity pay, last year, the commission made a decision to address changes in longevity pay and that was to reach a larger goal as far as moving pay compression and reducing the impact of that and some other things. Last year, longevity pay was frozen, that there was no increases going to be given into the future. Part of that was employees also, employees hired after November 24th, 2010, going back under the five-year mark, that they wouldn't begin, they would not be receiving longevity pay. And the savings were, last year for 2015, we are, see, we were seeing a $7,400 savings. We were projecting in 2016, a savings estimated at $8,700, but working with Gala and, and checking the folks leaving and, and retiring or just what have you, we're going to see about $14,000 just this year in, in savings from the changes that were made in the longevity. And as part of the, the changes, as the, one of the things that we did for this year's budget was is that we put in merit raises based on an annual performance evaluation. And the second thing that we did for is a cost of living adjustment scheduled for July One thing I want to, and this kind of is a springboard for what we're about to discuss next. Sometimes I know people can, can get concerned about this, of what that means for our employees and, and long-term employees and the health of the organization and financial health of the organization. One thing that, and that's, it's something that we do take a look at and we have to monitor, but again, we have to keep in mind that we are in competition with a wide variety of, of organizations and businesses to get and keep qualified staff. And having something like this assists us. It becomes more important in the next discussion that I want to have with you is the personnel, 2016 personnel benefits changes going into 2017 is that there are some insurance changes. There's three aspects of it. There's the employee premium contribution, that is what we have to budget for on our side of it. As you know, we were looking at, I budget to begin with, a 15% increase and hope that it comes in lower. And then the employee premium contribution changes. The employees put some money out of their own wallet, out of their own paycheck towards their health insurance premiums. And then also some plan changes. There are some plan changes. Now, as you know, as I said, we budgeted for about 15%. That came in, the employee premium contribution came in at 7%. And so that was, Gala and I were very, very happy about that. We communicated that with you and then when we started getting into the nuts and bolts of the other changes of what is going to be involved, we became a lot more concerned about what it means for our employees because there's changes there. And I think this is, again, goes back to why I think it's very, very important when we start looking at 2.5% for merit increases and the 1% on cost of living adjustment. Employee premium contribution changes for employee and spouse, the state of Kansas is going to increase that premium by 30%. Employee and family is going to increase by 30%. Employees only insurance will be a 9% increase and employee children will be a 9% increase. How that works out, well, let's go to plan changes. Second thing is, is Plan A changes. We have two possible plans that is available to all of our employees and elected officials. Plan A is changing by increasing the office visit co-pay by about 10 bucks, so it'd be about $40 now instead of 30. Increase out-of-pocket maximum, right now it's 4750 per individual and 9,500 for a family. That is moving up by $1,000 for the single individual and to $11,000, $11,500 for the, for the family. And then also increased deductibles will be a part of that also. Plan C is an increase out-of-pocket maximums from 2750 to 5,000 and from $5,500 for a family to $10,000. And again, increased deductibles. That's pretty sizable. That is a huge hit for our employees and all of this, these two things are after, after taxes and everything else is taken out. That hits them in their take-home dollars. Employee contribution changes, what the impact is for employees, I had Gala run that for me. And, but the thing that I really wanted to look at is that in, in real time, real, how it really affects somebody, one of our employees. Our average employee wage is 36,795. So when you add in the budget to COLA and then 2.5 merit increase for 2017, what does that come out to? That's 1,297 that the annual increase in wages for employees will be. And that is again, our average wage. So it's important to keep in mind that half of our employees, some of our employees are above that, some of, some of them are below that. The changes, you take that 1,297, the increase for wages employees and hold that up against the employee premium contribution increases. For employee only, Plan A and Plan C, about 250 bucks. So it's going to take, and this is that 1,297 is before taxes. That's before taxes, FICA and all of that is taken out. And so $250, it's going to go up for employee only. For employee and spouse, it's going, if you're on Plan A, whatever you're paying right now in a year, you're going to, to put on 1,218 more dollars onto whatever you're paying right now, this is adding to that. Plan C is 752. Employee and children, that is again, that had the 9% increase. Employee only had 9% increase. Employee and spouse, that was the 30% increase. But employee and children is 421 for Plan A. Plan C is 310. Employee and family, and this is where it really hits hard. Employee and family is Plan A, 2025, and Plan C is 1,158. Quite honestly, Gala and I look at that and kind of looked at it and said, what are they trying to do? And we can see pretty much if you look at the 30% increase in employee and spouse and employee family, they're trying to push people over to Plan C. That's what they're trying to do. But don't forget that, that's those out-of-pocket maximums have increased greatly over there. So if we take, again, that impact of what we see on those and the average county wage for employee wage, what does that turn into? And I think it's important to know what the break-even amount is for an employee at that maximum amount. Is that the break-even point for a family is $58,000. An employee that has family coverage will need to make $58,000 for there to be no impact to them on their paycheck. Which means that through the COLA and the merit increase, a salary increase of $2,030. If they were making $58,000, they would, they would have no, no impact. As it is right now, the, our employees are going to take that, take that, their raise and then how much is going, coming out and they're potentially going to be at loss. And I think it's also important to know, again, which impact. Grade 21 and below is, is that break, is that 36,000? Those are our deputies, meaning deputies and deputy clerk, deputy register of deeds, deputy attorney, or excuse me, not deputy attorney, deputy county clerk, deputy treasurer, those are the ones that I'm referring to, they're as deputies. But also our clerks one, two, and three, correctional corporals, sheriff deputies, dispatch, correctional officers, do juvenile detention. That is a lot of our bread and butter of what gets done within our organization. The work that is carried out, that is the employees that really are the boots on the ground of getting that done. And again, taking that break-even point of $58,000, that's grade 30. Out of, and there's only one grade higher than that. Out of 217 employees, 90% are under that break-even point of $58,000. There's only 22 employees that break even or see, will see an increase when those changes take effect on January 1st. And those largely are the department heads. Breaking it down, there's 31 of our employees that have, carry family coverage, 20 employee and child, 46 employee and spouse, and 88 are employee only. So 77 of our employees out of, out of the 217 are really going to take a significant hit. I can't express too much that there, there's not much that we can do about this. This is from the federal government with the changes that have been made in, in an entire industry with the Affordable Care Act. We are now, eight years later, starting to see all of those changes and moving down to where we have three or four insurance providers, health insurance providers across the United States. This is definite impacts on us. And as I've, I've used this analogy several times, when we start looking at, how do we mitigate this? How do we, because I'm not happy, I'm not happy with the idea of some of the things, the gains that we've made with our employees last year or beginning this year in 2016 with merit increases and COLAs. Moving them forward, we're taking, and then next year in 2017, we've moved them forward two steps, but then we're taking three steps back. And that's not anything that we have done. And not sure, looking at this, we're kind of standing against the tide, trying to hold back the tide and I'm not sure that we can do that. As Gala and I have talked about this, it is serious. I know our employees are not going to be happy, but again, there's very little that we can do about it in the here and now, but we have to, as Gala and I said, we need to start looking at, she and I need to start looking and exploring options. Because my personal opinion is scenarios like this, I don't see is going to change. I don't see this as something that's going to be this year and not be the same next year or the year after that. We might have a break a year or two and then be hit with the same thing in two or three years. We don't know. But as Gala and I have talked about, we need to start looking at solutions and alternatives and bring them back to you for discussions. And it only may be a quick fix. Looking back at, at this, 22 employees, looking at that in comparison to 195, 195 employees, the 22 can't subsidize, there's not enough of those employees that make above 58 to try to subsidize the 185, 195 that come back. Just so if anybody checks my math, I know this is 185, there's about 10 employees that don't have insurance with us. So, but that's what the difference is. But like I said, there's, there's not a lot that we can do, but we have an obligation to our employees to start looking at some different things that we can do. But I would also point out, going back to the 2.5 and the 1%, that is why COLAs are very, very important. Because those, it's not a raise. It is trying to keep pace with expenses that our employees are experiencing and this hits them before they even take their paycheck home.
John, my insurance is not through the county, but I see once in a while Gala's emails about some of the benefits you can get by doing certain things to help reduce that or whatever. And I think we should make every effort we can to encourage our employees, obviously safety first, what they're doing so there's not accidents and so forth, but from an exercise standpoint, from a preventive health checkups, everything that we can do to get our employees involved and make it easy for them to log on or take benefits or whatever it might be that, I don't know what it's called, Health Quest or whatever, whatever it might be, but from dark, department heads and administration and so forth, if we can make it as easy as possible and convenient as possible for our employees to access that information and do what they can to be as healthy and safety conscious, not only at work but at home. And hopefully they won't have major things that will hit them up that, you know, they go into the deductibles and anything else. We may not be able to control the costs, but if we can do something to help prevent our staff from having to use medical services, then I think we need to do that in whatever way we can for employees.
Absolutely. And we do do that, send that out. And that's one thing that we, we want to look at. Is there any way that we can assist our employees? Because there are some discounts if they do different things. Let's take a look at what we can do to extend ourselves and, and our HR staff to help them get some of those discounts and those little things add up. 40 bucks a month, it adds up. Forty bucks a month, it adds up. You know, that's close to, it's $480 a year that they can save. But also, I think it, it puts families and all, all of the employees in a tough position to look at, maybe they need to change. Maybe they need to change. And again, that is what I think, and Gaila and I both agree, is part of the, part of the objective. So, any other comments or questions?
I'd be curious about the, you gave the average salary, but where's the median fall for our employees? I mean, I saw the break on the, the grade, but I'm assuming there's still more than 50% of the people, employees, below the average.
There's, there's, the, the median would be quite a bit lower.
Yeah, and I would be, just for a personal, just sometime, throw me that number, whatever else, I'm kind of curious where that would, would fall at.
Absolutely. Any thoughts? The last thing I will say is that I know, I know this isn't going to be popular with our, with our staff, it's kind of an understatement. But also, at the same time, I think it's, is that they need to understand that when we make changes, when we suggest things, when we make recommendations or make changes to things, that, that which we can control, we're doing our best. And it's not to, to try to, to screw them, to, to, to hurt them, or injure them in any way, or to try to save a buck. But we have to look at, you guys and I have to look at the overall health of the organization, and what is the best for all employees, not just segments of our employees, and look at, at the best to, and balance that. And so what, there might be some short-term pain on, if we make changes to some things. But again, that is carefully considered, very carefully considered, before we make any changes.
It doesn't make it any easier, but though, what's occurring with us and our healthcare is industry-wide and employer to employer, and you stated before, and it's been, it's been happening for quite some time, many employers, private and public, are, are moving towards catastrophic healthcare, which is what would be the, the high deductible plan, the, the plan type, Plan C. And we're going to see, on the tables that I've looked at, increases like this in the future. This, this isn't an anomaly for this year.
Right. We can continue, like I said, continue to see this. I will say this, is that Gaila is going to be attending a training to go over all of this with the state, because they are the people that take a look at, that manage our healthcare insurance. And so we'll be looking at that, and we may be coming back with a update after she knows more about some of this, so. You know, I'd be happy to know that I'm halfway through. Just kidding. The next few things is just kind of a quick overview, just to break down where things are. The, I like to see the visual, the pie charts and things like that, helps me understand and to visualize some of these things a little bit better. General administration captures both the commission and the administration, and then most of the other departments are kind of split up. So, you can see where some of the biggest, some of the larger budgets are, and then, again, this is just the general fund, just the general fund. Service-type expenses, this breaks it out into what we see is 29% of our overall budget. That's everything, the whole ball of wax. 29% of our budget goes to, which is the largest portion of it, goes to public safety and courts. One thing I think is pretty important, and I hear this a lot, is that people say, you know what, I don't live on a dirt road, I don't live out on a country road, where's my tax dollars going? You know, I don't get it graded, or anything else like that. There has to be more. This is it, right there. That's one of the biggest components, is keeping our community safe, housing the bad guys, getting the bad guys to court, and keeping our community safe. And that's a very, very important component. Long-term debt is only about 4%. Community partners is only about 3% of our budget. Internal service, that captures employee benefits and some things like that. Another way to put this is that, out of the, the whole ball of wax, the $27 million budget, where does, how does that, those dollars spend? And I think this graph kind of illustrates that a little bit, is that we take that $27 million, and we divide it by the county population of 25,611, that we pulled off the US Census data. And we divide that 27 by that 25, and that gives us that the county spends $988.57 on every citizen of Franklin County. And then I further break it down, out of that 957, or $988.57, how much of that is spent in different capacities? And that just goes back to the service type that I talked about here. Out of $988, $291 of it goes for public safety, roads and bridges is $205 of it, $110 of it is for administration, including admin, clerk, treasurer, register of deeds, commission, IT, election facilities. Long-term debt is only $42 out of that 98. So you, that gives us a better visual display for me, so that we can see where we're spending our dollars the most. The last thing is that this is the whole enchilada, all of our different departments, all of the different budgets that we have within the department, public works, solid waste, ambulance, all of that, all of that is, is captured in there. And again, that's just visualization, I think, that's important to see. Any questions? Commission, the thing that I would, I would want to do is just say thanks to many people. This budgeting, a budget this large is a team sport. You put your time out to, to do this, dedicate your time, but also Janet from the many phone calls and emails and stuff that she gets from me, helping me work through this, and then all of the department heads and elected offices, and just all the work that they do to get this together. And then lastly, Joy has just been invaluable. This was her really first time, last year, she was just hired this time last year, and so it was trial by fire last year, but she understood it a little bit better and where we were going and what we were doing this year. And she's been just invaluable to me this year. So, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll open up the budget hearing for the 2017 Franklin County budget. Do you have one signed up?
Jean Hurd.
Jean?
We've been listening for a whole hour, which has done pretty good, what he showed us, and showing us the whole overall picture. But there's one area that I'm especially on tonight, because I've been involved in county budgets for over, since 2005. I've seen a bunch of bad commissioners, and I've seen some good. I think most of you are all good. And my, my, every time there was a budget deal, we would never get the exact figures. So, I'm asking tonight, I want some straight figures. Now, I'm talking about the industrial park. Now, it's been almost now two years since you, they've been purchased the industrial park, and fortunately, the city commission is having their budget hearing tonight. And there's two commissioners I got to talk to this past week. And all they've gotten done is just, people come and kick the tires, as they call it, about getting anybody out there. All right? Now, okay, now, I, I have to go stop again now, because I got to refresh some of the things that I had heard years ago when I was on the city council in Winsburg. And that was, some, the people from administration came to Winsburg and told us, and I've said this in this meeting, in this chamber as many times, said their forecast was, back then, was 10 years ago, that Ottawa would grow twice its size, twice its population in 10 years. Has it? No. Okay? So, my question to all of you is, what do you plan for the industrial park? You know? What numbers? What did you come and plan out? Of what progress and money is going to show an increase for us from that industrial park? Or do you have to wait until the city tells you of some prognosis person coming out there and settling in? But even when Jeff Seymour was here, he stated then, as I had brought out, since I'm on the Chamber of Commerce, when I asked that one night, how do you express to those people trying to come into industrial park when it's a floodplain? And he said, told me at that time, he said, yeah, it will be a dilemma to try to get around that. So, and that's what they're telling me now, those two commissioners. Now, what, there has to be something in this, what he showed you tonight, what, what do you foresee in growth in this budget time of 2017? Are we going to see a number? What? I seen on there, from 2016 to 2017, the prognosis was an increase of $5 million. Okay? How did you come up with that? There has to be something that you guys had sit down and done to figure out, just what kind of growth are we going to get here? So that's what I'm asking. I'm asking what is numbers. I don't want no figures or percentages, I want common, straight talk, so that everybody here and out there listening knows what the money that you think is going to occur. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. Is there? There has to be some figure somewhere of what we're going to get 2017. God knows, you know, our roads and everything else is going to increase, and cost and stuff like he indicated a while ago, and for the employees, but, you know, I'm on social security too, and I ain't got no increase for two years, has nothing, so, in the government. But that's here to me, you know? So, that's why I'm asking. Okay? And the second thing is, is, last week on Wednesday, and this pertains to this budget to me, there was an insurance guy here Wednesday, and the radio has played that several times, and of him commenting about drones. Now, are you going to purchase a drone 2017? The radio had indicated that discussion had already been talked about. Well, you're going by five minutes, this is a budget hearing, isn't it? I didn't hear no five minutes from the chairman.
We're going to go, wrap it up pretty quick, we're not going to go for an hour to discuss the drone and stuff, it really isn't, we haven't budgeted for the drone, and we haven't talked about the drone at, at that point, so.
It's still a part of the budget, isn't it? If you're talking about it, that he's been talking about it, and Hag has been talking about it, you know what a good cost of a drone is?
You were told at the beginning, no, we're going, you were told at the beginning, we're going to stick to the same rules as regular.
Okay, okay, then that's fine, if you want to stick with the five minutes. But I want some numbers on what I asked for.
I don't understand your question at all. I think he was saying, did we budget based on the increase we can expect from possible industrial growth? No, we budgeted based on known factors.
That, that is correct, is that, some of the things that we're doing out on the industrial park right now, there is continuing work going on on that, and that is all captured through the bonding process, and through the budget resolution, or excuse me, the resolutions that you passed authorizing the issuance of bonds. And that's what we're working on. And right now, none of that is slated to hit the 2017 budget.
Chair Howard, could I make a couple of comments in regard to?
Jean, Mr. Hurd, two comments from me, if I may. On the industrial park, obviously, none of us know how quick and how fast we will see a return on it. But I see it as an opportunity. And I don't know how long it'll take for the fruition of that to come through, but I believe it's a great investment for our community with foresight. And when I drive down Flum from 143rd, 151st, it's a two-lane road, but the setbacks are for a four-lane. Now, somebody 30 or 40 years ago determined we're going to set back for a four-lane road at some point in time. And somebody had the foresight, before I got on this board, to look at that industrial park, and I think it's a great opportunity for us. Who knows when or how much, but I think it's there. And then in regards to the drone, we have a budget, we have a limit, and by statute, we can't exceed that or increase the taxes. But if a department had a use for a drone and came and justified it within their budget, I would have no problem with looking at that, because things change from day to day. And if, if something happens within, whether it's appraiser's office, or public safety, emergency preparedness, somebody's had that benefit for a drone, and within their budget they can afford it, then I think maybe if it's appropriate, then that's what we would be looking at. And I thank you for your comments and the time that you give to looking at what we're doing.
Okay. The only thing I want to add to that too is, Jean, you've brought up the floodplain thing several times, and, and we've talked about that. It's, we've had engineers out there looking at that, it's been addressed, we didn't just go out there, the city or the county together, and grab land because it was there, not even thinking and worrying about whether the floodplain was a problem. It was all addressed and looked into, and we knew where basically we stood with that before that land was ever purchased by anyone. So, that has been addressed by more than one company, engineering companies that's come in and tested that, and showed us what could be done there, and how that could be taken care of and that. So, that has been addressed, and that.
Small portion of that land has a floodplain on it, there's a creek running through it, Creek's Flood, is where the water goes. There's a large portion of that land that is very usable and desirable for industrial development. That's why we purchased it.
And there has been more than one public meeting on the Rock Creek Park by some of our engineering companies and others that we're involved in, so I will make sure I let you know the next time there is one of those meetings coming up, and they have addressed a lot of the questions you have, and they'll probably address them again if the next time they have a public meeting on their progress out there, so. Okay, thank you. Questions? With that, we'll move to item number three, the consideration of resolution expressing the taxation policy for the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners of Franklin County, Kansas, with respect to financing the annual budget for 2017. Don?
Commissioners, you have in front of you the resolution authorizing, in accordance with Kansas state law, just the taxing authorization, that there's going to be movement in the tax levy, and that's what this is for.
Okay, the resolution number will be 16-14, correct? Okay, with that, would look for a motion to approve resolution number 16-14.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution expressing the taxation policy of the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners with respect to financing the annual budget for 2017, known as resolution 1614.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, Jean.
Commissioner Waymore?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Takes this, item number four, this is a resolution making appropriations and authorizing expenditures of funds to cover expenditures of Franklin County, Kansas, for all funds for the fiscal year of January the first, two thousand and seventeen, to December the thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Commissioners, this is just a resolution that expresses the expenditure limits for each fund and each department within the county.
This is the one that was published in the, the published budget.
And this will be resolution number sixteen dash fifteen? With that, if there's no other questions on this, would look for a motion to approve resolution sixteen dash fifteen.
Make that motion?
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, Jean.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Also, before we adjourn, would like to thank all of you for coming out, a good turnout, and appreciate you being here, and to show us some concern for the county, which is good. With that, would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. We're adjourned.